Order the June 8 meeting of the Caribou Planning Board. First item of business is approval of the May 11, 2017 minutes. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion that we approve the May 11 Planning Board minutes.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion passes. Public hearings. We have four, I believe, reviews tonight. Final review of a site design application for the parking lot at the proposed RSU 39 Central Office Building at 69 Glen Street. And we will open a public hearing at 5:32 for any members of the audience that wish to comment on this proposed parking area. Does we have anybody wishing to make any comments? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing at 5:32. And I presume, Tim, Mr. Roykes is here to represent that. You're not? Oh, really? Okay. Oh. Okay. Mark and company? Okay. Did you guys want to say anything? Or is it?
I think we spoke about it last time.
Okay.
It's pretty straightforward, so.
Okay. Any board members have any questions? Or should we go right straight to the checklist that has to be reviewed by us? No questions?
Let's just remind the audience that we are reviewing and potentially approving a parking lot. This has nothing to do with the building that will be adjacent to that parking lot.
True. And I've asked Steve Wentworth, our staff assistant, to chime in wherever possible that we need some assistance or guidance. Excuse me. Item A, Conformance with the Comprehensive Plan. I'm not sure if that's even addressing the comprehensive plan.
Not that I know of.
So...
It's not in nonconformance.
Correct. So, is it a yes or is it a non-applicable?
There must be something in there about education. It's probably, it's probably consistent with it.
So, let's make it a yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's actually a parking lot for a professional office space. So, the comprehensive plan with the development of businesses and commercial activities, it is one of the goals of Caribou. The development would be a positive for the community.
Thank you. Traffic.
Yes. Yeah, I don't see the impact on traffic.
It's going to be a site access. Again, that's a yes. Parking and vehicle circulation, that's obviously a yes if we're creating a parking area. Pedestrian circulation, I believe that the plans we were shown handled that, so that's a yes. Site conditions.
They're fine.
Would be a yes. Open space.
Now, that's NA.
Non-applicable.
I think it's NA because this isn't dealing with residential development or anything like that.
Okay.
Where open space would be an issue.
Sanitary sewage should be, well, that should be an NA because they're not generating any sewage out of a parking lot. Water supply is NA. Emergency vehicle access would be a yes, it's compliant.
Looks good on the plan.
Waste disposal, is that again an NA?
I think so.
Yep. Buffering.
I think the buffering is adequate. I would say yes.
I would agree. Natural areas. I'm not sure if natural areas is an NA on that one.
I think so. It's a parking lot.
You think it's a non-applicable?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Exterior lighting.
We heard there's going to be lighting.
There's going to be lighting.
Just lighting in the plan.
So, that's going to be a yes. Stormwater management.
That's in the plan.
Yes, I remember. The catch basins, erosion and sediment control follows suit, yes. Buildings, not applicable. Existing landscaping.
There isn't.
At this time, NA. Infrastructure, basic infrastructure is the road.
Roads, utilities, that's not applied.
Yep. Advertising, NA. Design relationship to site and surrounding properties. I was going to say, that's a yes.
Steve, were we going too fast?
No, you're fine.
All right.
Location of outdoor storage areas would be, wait a minute. I'm on the wrong one. I went backwards a ton. Okay. Scenic vistas and areas, NA.
Agreed.
Utilities for parking lot, NA. Mineral exploration, NA. General requirements, I would say yes. Phosphorus export is an NA. And that's it. So, any questions from any member of the planning board on this proposed parking lot? If not, is there a motion?
I move to approve it.
I second it.
Moved and seconded that this parking area be approved. All in favor? Moving carries.
Well, logistical issue. When are we going to be signing the plan? Is it here tonight for us to sign?
There's a, I know there's a copy on, I believe, on the table here.
All right.
The Stantec Engineering.
So, when we adjourn, let's not just plug out. Let's make sure we sign all the, not only this one, but other things we may...
There's four of them.
Need to sign tonight.
And a copy of the application, probably Phil's copy where things have just been checked off.
Yeah, we should come and sign those.
With yes, no's, and NA's.
Yep.
That's acceptable, Denise?
Oh, rats.
What?
Well, I double-sided my whole thing and the next page, the backside of it is the next issue.
Well, go on, you.
Phil, I can take care of that later if you want to just sign this.
Actually, have you got a...
You want mine?
A non-double-sided page?
No.
They're all double.
They're all double. Yeah. Our effort to save paper. Well, here, just sign that and return it.
I think we received the application via email. Does that sound right?
Yes. Yes, I believe so.
Okay. Next item, a review, again, is a final review of a site design application from Caribou Management Company LLC for parking lot development at Skyway Plaza. And we will... Pardon? Okay. We will open a public hearing at this time at 5:39 PM for the final review of the Caribou Management Company parking lot development at Skyway Plaza. Is anybody here looking to address this parking lot development at Skyway Plaza? Speak, come up.
Mr. Chairman. My name is John Morrell. I'm the owner of Custom Car Wash and Caribou. I am an abutting landowner to this proposed development, which I'm in favor of. I realized last public meeting, hearing, you guys did your checklist, which I'm assuming you did, or is this the meeting where you deal with it now?
This is the official checklist.
Okay, thank you.
Last time I reviewed.
Okay. My, of course, my biggest proposal, my biggest concern is, of course, the stormwater drainage and how it's being addressed and how it affects my property. My goal in this development, or what I'd like to see in this development, which I will address to Mr. Roykes and Mr. Rosenberg, is to see it to be a smooth transition between the two, but it also results in no stormwater runoff into my property, which through development, I guess through engineering, but I cannot address that strongly enough. I realize maybe this, I might be out of turn in addressing this here at this point, but I feel that it's something that should be governed. I realize that the last public hearing, Mr. Hunter did say that if this address, this issue wasn't addressed accordingly, if I had issues, that there were other people that I could talk to about it. But I cannot emphasize enough to the parties involved next to me that this should be addressed. So, thank you for your time and...
Oh, I think we're in agreement that this, whatever issues there are, should be addressed during the time of development, not after the fact.
My recollection, and let me back up for a second and just openly declare for potential perceived conflict of interest that John Morrell is an employee of mine and a former brother-in-law. So, there is connections to us.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, for that demise.
Well...
No, no, it's not on the agenda.
I just want to make sure, in case somebody says, "Wait a minute here, isn't he related?" He was. And he is an employee of mine. But I, my recollection is that the plan that was proposed by Mr. Roykes last meeting showed, I believe, at least two catch basins, which were going to capture all the stormwater runoff before it got to John's property.
Yes, that's correct, Mr. Chairman. For the record, Tim Roykes with BR Smith Associates, engineer for the project. There is a significant amount of pavement there and certainly the runoff is there and John's property is downgrading of that. We do propose a curb along the edge of the new development to capture that stormwater. We've got a small ditch associated with that and a couple of catch basins that show up in the plan. Same, same thing as before. We're going to intercept that flow. Our own lot, we've developed just enough to put the building on and the associated parking with it. We have what's called an underdrained soil filter, same thing we had shown last time, to intercept the flow on our lot and treat it there before it's released. So, we certainly have heard John's comments and we have not strayed from that. We've continued on with the, the design as it was, addressing those and the other code issues. So, we're comfortable that we've addressed that. Thank you.
I have a question for you, Tim. We're seeing a plan for a lot with drainage. Can we anticipate seeing, that's a different one. Can we anticipate seeing a plan for a building soon or is we just getting, doing homework to get ready?
Yes, B. We're doing the homework to get ready for something, something, I mean, and that something else is, you know, he's going to have to market that, that lot and say, "This lot is now approved. We've talked about utilities. We've talked about drainage." And so, he can market it as a shovel-ready lot.
Gotcha.
Yep.
Thank you.
Anybody else in the room want to address this proposed parking area by Mr. Rosenberg on Skyway Avenue or whatever the street is? Yes?
Just one question. Are those multiple lots?
Would you be able to identify yourself?
I'm Carl Bell, and I live in behind the mall. I just wondered if those were developments for multiple units or do you have any plans yet for the land?
Those lots are not in back of the...
I know. I know where they are.
Right. And so, what's being proposed in this are three new lots along, along the Van Buren Road, which will come up in another item on the agenda on the subdivision. So, this one right now is just specific to what we have labeled as Lot Number Four.
Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Rosenberg has three items. This parking area, the establishment of lots four, five, and six, and the conversion of residential to commercial property on...
Solomon Street.
Solomon Street. So, this, we're still, we're still in the open public hearing for the establishment of the parking area. Anybody else have anything to say? Declare the public hearing closed at six, excuse me, at 5:45 PM. Moving ahead to the final site design criteria, review by the planning board. Conformance with comprehensive plan, I would say that's a yes.
I agree.
Traffic is adequately handled, yes. Site access, yes. Parking and vehicle, we're again, we're making a parking lot, yes.
Not actually, we're making a building lot, but there's adequate parking around it.
Right, but we're establishing, go ahead, Steve.
I do have a question. When I, when I reviewed the plan, Skyway Drive, the street section that goes from Bennett Drive up onto Skyway Plaza, this, this lot is number, will be Lot Number Four of the subdivision, re-division that you'll be looking at next. When we get to the questions of site access, my, my question that I, that I determined when I looked at the plan, the lots being created, this parcel, question now was Lot Number Four. As far as street frontage, it looks like the street actually stops at the start of the property. I think it's called Skyway Drive. So, when that, when that accessibility route will extend into the Skyway Plaza subdivision, it needs to be deeded as a right-of-way across the side of these new lots being developed. So, as, as it is now, the Skyway Drive from Bennett Drive up onto Skyway Plaza merely just touches the corner of this, this lot, I believe.
In other words, Skyway Drive ends at the end of Mr. Morrell's property.
I believe so. So, part of this would be, for the board's approval, would be with a contingency that the engineers create a deeded right-of-way along the side of this, at least this one lot, regardless of the redevelopment of the rest of the subdivision.
That's already done. You'll see that on the subdivision plan. We've got the access easement coming from Skyway Drive, 40-foot wide easement going along lots four, five, and six, and it turns to 100-foot ride, right-of-way out onto the Van Buren Road with rights for utilities as well. So, yes, Steve, we caught that.
And that'll be recorded back at the registry.
That's on the plan.
And those, and those lots, when Lot Four is conveyed, it will be conveyed for those four bounds with that, that right-of-way you're mentioning.
That's great.
You mentioned 40 feet. I thought that, well, but then you're talking a right-of-way as opposed to a street.
And it's a private easement. These, these lots, because he owns the remainder, he owns the plaza.
Well, we're developing a pad.
Yeah, streets are normally 50 or 60, 60 feet wide.
Correct.
But this won't be a street.
Correct.
It'll just be an easement.
Exactly.
I think our requirement for right-of-ways is a 50-foot wide right-of-way though.
For a deeded access on a private lot?
I believe so.
I just, while I, I'll interject that on the land adjacent to where I built my home on Washburn Street, there is a 10-foot wide right-of-way that was put in by Reginald Wood for him to have access from Washburn Street all the way to Caribou Stream, so nobody could stop him from going fishing.
It'd be a limited right-of-way and when you think of, in real estate law, right-of-ways can be granted for various limited accessibility, right to, I don't know, to access and harvest timber, right for agricultural purposes, the right to pass over to access your camp.
Right.
And things along that line, it's not where you're looking at public vehicles such as fire trucks and ambulances and other such equipment.
So, you're thinking that if it's to be used by the general public, it needs to be a minimum of 50 feet as opposed to 40?
Is that a problem, Tim, to Daniel?
If we discover that, if we discover that that is what it is, I mean, we can potentially approve this contingent upon satisfying whatever the requirement is.
And that would, what would be important, you know, when we get to the subdivision discussion, I mean, or now, yes, that would be important because we have the mileage and things with us tonight, so that certainly is important because this was our second meeting.
Yeah. Okay, well, let's put the site access on pause for a moment while Steve kind of, don't have anything here to, to check on that. No. Well, we can...
It's a good question.
It'll be a contingency to the motion, is that?
We don't know that yet. We'll think about it.
Okay. Well, so then, do we want to remove the yes on site access for now?
No, just put a star next to it so we have to deal with it before we finally vote.
Okay. Although, actually, wouldn't it be having to do with the vote of the creation of the subdivision?
Yes, they are.
It would be with the next item, not this item, potentially. So, then, moving on, pedestrian circulation, is that not applicable?
To the extent there may be pedestrians.
On-site circulation of pedestrians is okay.
Okay, so it's a yes. Site conditions, yes.
Yeah.
Move in there.
Open space.
For the same reason as the other plan, I don't think it applies.
Okay. Sanitary sewage, not applicable. Water, water as in a supply source, not, not as opposed, not pertaining to drainage, yes. Emergency vehicle access, I would say is a, is a yes. Waste disposal, there's no waste being generated. Buffering, I would say that's a yes. There seems to be ample space. Natural areas, not applicable. Exterior lighting, at this point in time, you're just creating a vacant lot, so there's no lighting or anything, there's no building there, so it's not applicable. Stormwater management.
In the plan.
Is a yes based on the plan submitted.
Same for Pete and Rosen and Settle.
And erosion and sediment control. Building, not applicable. Landscaping, not applicable. Infrastructure, not applicable?
I guess what we were talking specifically about catch basins and stuff, that would supposed to be the infrastructure of the...
That's the stormwater management.
That, yeah, that falls more into stormwater management. So, infrastructure.
Infrastructure is like, are we impacting the fire department and so forth?
Not applicable.
I don't think so.
Advertising, not applicable. Design relationship to surrounding properties.
It's okay.
It's a yes. Scenic vistas and areas, not applicable. Utilities, not applicable. Mineral exploration, not applicable. General requirements.
It's a yes.
It's a yes. Phosphorus export, not applicable. Okay, so, that's the situation. Regarding the site access, we can kick that ball down to the next item, which is...
Yeah, we don't get to kick it very far, but...
Well, it's the next item on the agenda.
For purposes of this one, though.
For this, yeah, yeah.
For purposes of this one, we're all set?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay. So, is there a motion?
I move to approve it.
It moved to be approved.
I'll second it. Can I let someone else?
Denise started.
Oh, then go ahead, Denise.
Michelle.
Michelle, excuse me. Well, my apologies.
Bill.
Michelle, Denise. Michelle, seconded. Did you get that, Denise?
Yes.
Okay, I've been moved and seconded that this proposal for establishment be granted. Any further discussion? All in favor? Moving carries.
Let's start a signature sheet.
Well, that one ends up just right. Okay, next item, final review of a subdivision plan, excuse me, final review of a subdivision application from Caribou Management Company LLC for the re-division of a subdivision at Skyway Plaza. And this is where they are establishing lots four, five, and six adjacent to Van Buren Road, going from Mr. Morrell's Custom Car Wash to the entrance from Van Buren Road. And so, we will declare a public hearing open on this matter at 5:54. Anybody wish to speak to this item?
I will, just quickly, Mr. Chairman. The lot layout has remained the same, the size and shape. Additional notes on the plan, like we had shown initially, the access easement, we also added a couple of labels for utilities, so that's ensured that it's, it's part of that. So, there was just a few notes that we've added, but otherwise, in its entirety, it's the same thing that you saw, same layout, same size, just some additional housekeeping notes is all.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yes, John?
Mr. Chairman, curious about how you're going to feed those lots for utilities, specifically water and sewer. If you're coming off of which way you're going to go with that, just curious on how that might someday impact me.
The water is available in Skyway Drive at the end of John's property. We've also looked at a couple of different options. We can either put a gravity sewer line in to Bennett Drive, or we can go with a pump station on the south side behind the DHHS building where the sewer line comes down now from Solomon Street. So, a couple of different options. We discussed both of those with the utility district, both the water and sewer. So, they're available, they're there on site, so we can go either of two ways.
So, if you're going to do a gravity sewer line to Bennett Drive, how are you going to get there?
In Skyway, it would be in Skyway Street.
On Skyway, it's coming right down the middle of the street, even though the sewer line kind of crosses through my property, it comes through Burger King, goes out the other way. So, your proposal is going right straight down?
We would go right down Skyway Street. That's one option, John. The other option is to go with pump station. And...
You're going to develop three lots, I mean, it's, I realize minimal flow, but it's a long way to go.
And, and we're still in the, the design piece of, of that, but I can tell you, just looking at some of the budget numbers that, that we looked at and impact to just everything in general, the pump station makes more sense.
The pump station was going to go where, which, where was the pump station going to empty to?
To the existing sewer line in back of the Plaza.
Back of DHHS.
But it ended up coming in behind the charge, the bank up above?
It runs all the, yes, exactly, John. It runs right now, currently, the, the main runs behind the building and goes out through the bank slot to Bennett Drive. And there's, there's a couple of manholes in there and fortunately, there's one in the open behind DHHS that we could pump to.
And then it's gravity feature.
Then it's gravity from there out. Yep.
When you say behind DHHS, are you talking to the east or the south of DHHS?
South.
On the south side?
Yep.
Okay. That makes more sense.
Yep.
Is that a building above ground? I don't know what the pump station is.
No, that would be, no, that would be, it's, it's like a large sanitary manhole that the sewer runs into, you see, and, and it's, it's a larger structure than that, and it has a pump in it, and it's just, you know, as, as the flow rises, it comes on and it pumps and...
The whole thing, it would be below ground?
Correct, yeah. There's no above-ground feature, no. It would be in the ground. And we would size it large enough to capture four, five, and six. It would only make sense if it was.
Now, you're saying that the economics is leaning in that direction. The other option was to do the gravity flow. Now, John mentioned the sewer line runs through his property. I'm surprised it's not under the street.
For whatever reason, his, his feeds through Burger King's lot and then into Bennett Drive.
And that's the only connection to Bennett Drive is through Burger King and Custom Car Wash?
Well, no, for, that's, that's their, John's and Burger King's connection, that is how theirs exists today. We would look not to get into that. We would look to do our own in Skyway Drive. We looked at a couple of different options. What would it be just to go down Skyway Drive or what would it be with a gravity line or what would it be to do a pump station?
So, you're not anticipating tying into their sewer line at all?
No, just, just, good neighbors and all, but just too many players. I don't know how to say that. There's just too many people downstream.
Okay.
So, Mike, so if you're going to run that sewer line, say, if you did decide to go to, to Bennett Drive, you'd be cutting across using what, the city easement or the access that's provided public access to get down through there? Are you going to be coming across, how are you going to get there from?
Yeah, we've had some discussions. When I talked with the utility district about Skyway Drive, they contacted someone within the municipality and they said, "Oh, that's a city, that's a city street." We don't believe it is. It, it, there is a, when you look at the plans and the subdivision and the work that, that has been done even prior to us, I believe it's owned by Caribou Management and there is a, a declaration of easement that allows people to travel across that. So, we graciously accept the city's effort to pave and maintain that, and this may be a deal breaker now that we're, that we're showing our cards here, but, but...
That's a big deal.
Affairs in all kinds of communities.
It is, John, because, you know, looking at it, we haven't found where that was conveyed to the city.
My only point is, okay, Tim, is that, and I'll be honest with you, I'm getting ready to do some development in my lot.
Right.
And I just hoping that, I mean, I can go ahead and do my lot, because apparently there's no construction date yet if you guys are even going to be doing any construction. And my thing is, what I want to do for paving and all this sort of thing, I would like it to be a smooth transition.
Absolutely. What, what would be key, John, for, for all of us is, when you get ready to do that, we oughta talk with the utility district and say, where does that water line end? If it ends-
Oh, I know where it is.
Okay, I mean, if it's beyond you and we can tie into it and not, and not disrupt your new paving, that's, that's key. And I'm ninety-nine point nine percent sure right now, the pump station's gonna be where it is. So, so we're not, you know, yes, you're gonna go pave your lot, and then two days later, we're gonna be in to dig it up, that doesn't make any sense, we wouldn't do that.
I understand. I just wanna make sure.
Absolutely, no, 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 absolutely, yeah.
That's a very fair question, that's-
Yeah, for sure it is.
I have one more question. Uh, the pump station, have you taken into, um, a factor of the runoff from the hill, the area behind here where the houses are, uh, it's pretty wet at the bottom of that hill, and a little swampy in some areas, so, assuming that that's been taken in-
Yeah, the, yes, the, the pump station serves just the sanitary sewer, we cannot put any water into it, the, the utility district doesn't allow that.
Be sealed, be sealed, though.
Oh, yeah, yes, I mean, the, the building, that, you know, any new development would be piped directly to a main, and then those mains, sewer main, and the main would go into the pump station.
Okay.
See, Carla, sewers in Caribou do not deal with stormwater.
Right.
Or at least they're not supposed to.
Well, that's why I asked. They deal with a lot of water, and are always-
So what you're telling us, Mr. Royson, is that basically Skyway Drive, which runs in front of my property, is basically owned by Caribou Management?
That's our understanding, John.
I mean, it's a very important factor for the city, I have that clarified.
Absolutely.
And I'm sure Mr. Rosenberg would probably, uh, transfer it for a dollar to avoid the maintenance and snow plowing of that-
I think he definitely would listen to you quite, yes.
Well, who's paying for the plowing now?
City Caribou.
Yeah.
I would just interject, um, we have no objections to status quo, and we're not playing any objections to status quo. So, no one should worry.
Now, it's, it's not unusual for, in any city to, for part of the city to believe they have a street and someone else to believe that they don't. It happens all the time, I don't think it's anything that we're gonna get excited about.
Well, Mr. Chairman, as an abiding landowner, sir, uh, I would think that, uh, if a day ever came, you ever sold a property, okay, and that property was conveyed to a new landowner, then all of a sudden, access to my property is blocked off, and it's all of a sudden gonna have a tariff to, uh, or a tollable to get into my property, I think that's very, very-
I think you need to not worry too much about that, there's easements that are already required.
I was gonna say, isn't, first of all, was an easement granted?
I just make everybody, I make everybody more ease.
Yes.
So the development was originally done by my grandfather forty years ago, and my father, and then me. We have no intention of going anywhere, we have no intention of upsetting Mr. Morrell, we have no intention of putting in water where it's not supposed to be, we have no intention of messing up any sewer lines. If anything, what we wish to do with lot four will improve Mr. Morrell's business and him.
Tim, did you say there, there is an easement already, that, that, what's there is an easement, or?
The way, the, the original plan shows what we all know as the Plaza, you know, fairly large parcel of land, but it also, there's this rectangular piece attached to it that we all drive in on Skyway Drive. And that is all one parcel with, with that little finger sticking out there. Then there's also what's called a declaration of, of easement that was granted for people to, that were going to be in the Plaza, that was their right to come in. And that was granted before, uh, the Van Buren Road was in, was in play, that we know it as today. So, those, that, that was the, how you got into the, to that building. And, and I haven't looked specifically at, at John's deed, I'm assuming that-
I just, I, I just think about that.
You probably haven't, I don't know if you have an easement as part of that or not.
I don't think so.
But-
Well, let me throw something out and ask our resident attorney if he would, uh, give us some free legal here. Adverse possession is a, is a real estate law where if for twenty years, somebody openly uses another's property without the owner objecting to it, then the owner essentially loses their rights to that. Uh, a, a court action has to make it occur, am I all right?
Yep.
It almost never happens, and it, it sounds like it was used with permission, which would make it not, not adverse possession doesn't, doesn't account to, when you got easement.
Yeah.
Well, but if there is no easement-
Well, he's got a point.
No, but I mean, I think we're getting caught in the weeds here, we're, we're, you know, this, this, yeah, the, the subdivision is, is, you know, we have access for what we're, what we're doing, and I'm sure John will look into this tomorrow, but for what we're doing, I think we, we're, we're good.
I agree, Mr. Chairman.
Anybody? Yes?
I've, I've just kinda scanned through the deed very quickly, and there is reference to several different easements. There's not a, a good description of what the easements are, but there are several easements referenced.
Okay.
It does mention Burger King, I believe, um, another property, I think Henry Porter, dated August twenty-seven nineteen, nineteen seventy-one. So there are, there are some sort of easements involved, so some title, title word possibly would be a way towards determining exactly what the easements may be.
Okay.
Karen, Karen was just mentioning that, Karen from our office, um, yes, keep playing that out, Steve, the, the, your, your lot was a parcel, part of the Burger King lot.
Correct.
And when the Burger King lot was purchased, it came with that easement that we're talking about across the lot. So, across that Skyway Drive, this, that we're talking about, when Burger King got their lot. So they obtained the lot, plus they had the right, or the easement. So when John got his lot as a piece of it, he would, he would benefit from that, you're not gonna sell a landlocked piece of, piece of, of land. So, yes, you have access to it, so, you know, both lots have access to that or have the ability to use it. The other discussion is who actually owns it at the end of the day, I think we, that's neither here nor there, yeah.
Okay. Any other, uh, comments from the public? Okay, we will close the public hearing on this item at six oh eight PM. And, moving to the checklist, and this is for the subdivision-
Sir?
Are we?
I'm not sure you're on the same page, look at page twenty-four.
Hold on a second. Look at page twenty-four, yeah, I guess where I was going.
There you go.
Yeah, that's where I was, but is this the, this is the final review, yes. Wait a minute here. Why?
Final plans to show the elements from you, and here's, start out with A.
So that's a different checklist?
Yes, because it's a subdivision.
Subdivision. Final plans to show elements, following elements for review.
We don't have the plan.
We don't have the plan.
They're probably up here on the table, we don't have it.
Do you know if there's? Oh, where'd you get that, is that from last week?
Yeah.
No, 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 no. Those two things that were on the table are for, are new items, they're not part of this discussion.
Okay.
Do you wanna hold them in front of you while you look through the checklist?
Okay, four, five, and six, right here. Thank you, Michelle. Okay, final plans, show elements for review. Uh, this is the first time, I think, we do one of these. Pollution, not applicable? Or is it?
Not applicable, I don't think.
It's a subdivision of land.
Yep. Sufficient water, uh, I would think that is in the form of potable water, in other words, water-
City water.
City water, and-
Why do they have sufficient water and then municipal water supply? If it's municipal water supply, B would be not applicable.
So B is N-A, and C is yes.
This, this list comes from the state of Maine.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Erosion.
Meaning erosion control.
Right. It's erosion-
It's in the plan.
Yes. Traffic is addressed, yes. Sewer's disposal-
We just talked-
We just talked about the pumping house, uh, which is a yes. Solid waste.
Not applicable, for three building lots.
Yeah. Aesthetic, cultural, and natural values, is that a yes or not applicable?
It's, uh, perfectly fine, I guess.
It's been addressed.
I'd say it's yes. Conformity with local ordinance and plans, yes. Financial and technical capacity-
Yes.
Obviously, yes. Surface water in outstanding river segments, not applicable?
Surface water-
Well, yeah, surface water, okay, so that's a yes. Groundwater.
Not efficient.
Not, not applicable?
I don't think so.
Yeah. Flood areas, not applicable. Freshwater wetlands.
No.
River stream or brook?
No.
No. Stormwater?
Yes.
Yes. Spaghetti lots prohibited, not applicable. Lake phosphorus concentration, not applicable. Impact on adjoining municipalities, not applicable. Okay, blocks.
If, if it were a subdivision, the creation of a subdivision, they're looking at the, the shape of the streets within, are you creating?
Blocks, yeah, so in this case, it's not applicable.
Those four were in a-
Yeah, relationship to subdivision, to community facilities.
That, that's all got to do with a residential subdivision?
Yeah, performance guarantees, parking, parking driveways, roads, and sidewalks. Those are all not applicable?
I think so.
Okay, archaeological sites, haven't come across any arrowheads or anything, okay, not applicable. Easement for natural drainage.
That's a yes.
For natural drainage, easement?
I think they, they described the steps we took to avoid natural drainage, right?
So, yeah, I don't think, but an easement isn't part of it.
We don't, I, I can't read all the fine print, are there easements for natural drainage?
Or what, are they cont, they're contemplating non-natural drainage, right, if we have storm drains?
Exactly, so I'm gonna say, uh, it's either a no or not applicable. I'm gonna-
If you say no, you're saying that it doesn't satisfy-
Yeah, I'm gonna say it's not applicable. Erosion and sedimentation control, is a yes. Fire protection, yes. Impact on natural beauty, aesthetics, historic sites, wildlife habitat, rare natural areas and public access to the shoreline. Not applicable impact on water quality at the shoreline, and a lots and density.
Phil, this is where I need to, just to read this out of, uh, number eighteen on our general requirements for development.
Yep.
All lots must, must about a public way unless an access road meeting the following criteria has been constructed within a deeded right-of-way, having a minimum width of fifty feet. The access road shall be constructed to a minimum of width of twelve feet, so that would be the actual paved area above, which it's all blacktop now.
Yeah.
So again, for create, the creation of these lots, they do need to have a fifty-foot wide deeded right-of-way, which amounts to nothing more than a, a dotted line on the plan when it gets recorded at the registry and is saved in the tax assessor's office.
So the forty feet will have to become fifty feet?
So, do you mean, that, that, that scene is for private ways as well?
For the development of lots, any, so we're creating four, five, and six, three new lots, so they'll need to have a fifty-foot wide right-of-way accessibility to the lots, even though there's a, what, a three-hundred-foot wide parking lot or-
Right, but, I guess one of the questions is, does it distinguish whether it's a public, you know, a public street or a private?
Either a public street or a deeded right-of-way, which would then give whoever may in the future purchase lots four, five, and six from the subdivision, they will have, in a sense, it guarantees them access to their properties. It's-
So we're-
So a contingency on approval would-
Yeah.
That, that Tim can agree to.
Okay, so lots and density, uh, is a yes. Monumentation.
Should be shown on the plan.
Will there be-
Be hard to see on that size, but it should be shown.
Will there be corner monuments, or?
Will we property fence place, yes, that's the one you're tasting about.
All right, okay. So that's a yes. Preservation of natural features, that's a yes or not applicable. Rear lots is not applicable. Reservation or dedication and maintenance of usable open space and common land facilities and services. Reservation or dedication, maintenance of usable, I'm not sure what that is. Anybody have a clue what that is? Reservation or dedication and maintenance of usable open space and common land facilities-
Oh, I see, we are going to create a park.
Yeah.
So that's an not applicable.
Yeah, of, often subdivisions will set aside certain areas for playgrounds or tree growth, or just places for kids to play, or-
I see we got number twenty-seven is sewer's disposal as number seven, excuse me, as number F on the prior page of sewer's disposal, we get that twice on this.
Well, it's because that's a bunch of state requirements, this is a bunch of city requirements.
Sidewalks, not, not applicable? Or do we want?
I don't think it's applicable.
Okay. Stormwater management, yes.
Covered.
Been addressed. Street trees, esplanades, and greens, open green space. Not applicable. Utilities, yes.
Covered.
Water supply, yes. If the application and plan is found to be complete with all elements, a review satisfactory to the planning board, the applicant shall provide three full-size twenty-four by thirty-six-inch subdivision plans appropriate for signatures and recording at the registry of deeds.
Now, we get to the requirement, we can make a condition of approval for that the deeded right-of-way would be fifty feet. But now, Steve, do we sign with that condition, or do we wait until we see that that change has been made to the milars?
It's your choice. I think, I think it's a safe, it's safe to approve it and-
Well, wait a minute, the, the milars go to the registry of deeds.
One goes to the registry, one goes to the assessor?
Yeah, I, I'm thinking, I'm thinking that it should, uh, I'd hate to see a milar end up at the holding registry of deeds with a forty-foot right-of-way and our signatures. I mean, even though the motion is contingent upon that being a fifty-foot right-of-way, I think our signature should be on the one with the fifty-foot right-of-way.
It has to be. You can't, you can't go registry otherwise. What we've done, when situations like this come up, we'll make this change, bring the milars over and leave them here in the office, and ask that you all come in-
And sign.
And sign them, and then we'll send them off with the fifty foot, so it's only got one signature.
And the motion tonight is contingent on the fifty feet.
Exactly.
Yeah, right, right there.
Well, you're, you're gonna put it in your motion, and Denise can record it.
My motion's-
Well, on the one that we signed.
On the one we signed, yes.
Addition of approval.
I move we approve the subdivision with the condition that the deeded right-of-way for access be changed to fifty feet.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve this, contingent upon a fifty-foot easement. Any further discussion? All's in favor? Both in carries. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Signing parties are common, the council, other towns that have been there. For R O W, right away. Okay.
Moving, thank you, Michelle.
Oh, okay.
Okay, number four, our review of a request to rezone a portion of Skyway Plaza property along Solomon Street from residential to commercial. And this, I'm told, is to be a recommendation to the city council, that we do not approve this, city council has to approve this, and we simply make a recommendation.
Being that it's a change to the, uh, city zoning ordinance and map, only the, only the council can act, make the actual changes to the ordinance, but the planning board is one of the, one of the three methods of making the recommendations to the council.
And this requires a public hearing?
Public hearing, at least at the council level. It's recommended that the planning board also hold a public hearing, uh, as, as part of your review.
Claire, we open a public hearing at six twenty PM for discussion of the rezone of Skyway Plaza property along Solomon Street from residential to commercial. Anybody from the public? Yes, Mr. Morrell?
Mr. Chairman, uh, what level of commercial development is this? Is this like a commercial two development, uh, or just a straight-up commercial development
Is this like a commercial two development or just a straight-up commercial development or rezoning?
It would be a commercial two, being that Caribou only, Caribou is limited to two commercial zones, C-one, which is our downtown Sweeten Street area, then commercial two was intended for more, easier accessibility to commercial spaces such as Bennett Drive. I believe your property and Skyway Plaza is primarily a C-two zone.
So as the commercial two zoning change, what kind of development would that allow in that, that type of zoning area?
My understanding is it would be basically this, well, okay, and anybody correct me if I'm wrong, C-one downtown is where properties and buildings are stuck, one against the other.
Okay.
C-two, you have-
Side yards.
Side yards, you have distances, you can't, gotta stay at least six feet or more away from your neighbor, et cetera. So C-two is gonna be less compressed.
Okay.
It's a little looser.
Yeah.
It's gonna be everything but downtown.
Okay.
Because all of Bennett Drive, I believe, is C-two.
Certain requirements for accessibility for parking. Do you have anything specific, John, or question?
Well, no, actually, I'm just trying to understand it because my concern is, okay, basically this is, this redevelopment or this rezoning is basically a residential neighborhood, okay? Um, I don't understand why at one time the city council actually gave, changed it from commercial back to residential, now they're going back to commercial. Um, and do the, the neighborhood which I live in, okay, um, trying to understand what kind of commercial development could happen there. We have a nice quiet neighborhood now, uh, you know, low-profile traffic, um, and why this would open, you know, what kind of commercial development this would open up to? Like you're saying, parking lots, maybe wild spaces. I mean, basically, the, the, the area is basically a swamp, I mean, it, uh, I'm just trying to understand it.
I'll try to answer some of your questions and, and again, I'm just-
It's fine.
Bits and pieces from the back of my mind. Uh, my impression is that the entire Skyway Plaza property, when purchased by his grandfather from, uh, from the Brushia boys-
Correct.
Uh, the entire thing was zoned commercial.
Probably.
All the way to the bottom of Solomon Street.
Correct.
And after the fact, they came forward and said, uh, Solomon Street area is residential, we'd like to change this from commercial to residential in hopes of settling some residential lots. As you mentioned, it's wetland, nobody wants to build there, they've been unsuccessful, they're asking to put it back to commercial as it originally was.
I'd be curious enough if you have any plans and development?
Phil's summary is it, it's always been a C-two or used or thought to be C-two, and your explanation is right, uh, so they weren't moving any other development in there, looked at some residential lots, that didn't, you know-
Didn't work out.
Didn't work out, so go back to-
Two thousand and eight, Tim, to the summary.
Ah, that sounds correct. So go back to, to commercial as, as it was, so that's, there's, there's no, there's no plans for it, just it makes sense to be commercial, so.
And I would, I would think, and I'm just speculating here, Mr. Rosenberg can comment, I mean, I would think that if Mr. Rosenberg decided to sell the property, uh, the entire shopping center, that the property may have more value if it is zoned all commercial. Potential buyer would-
No, I mean, that's it, there's, there's no hidden agenda, just it's always been commercial and like to see it commercial again.
Uh, you probably wanna keep it residential and, because it is in a residential neighborhood, but I mean, that's not my property, so I'm just curious, that's all. As well as a bunch of other neighbors, people in our neighborhood that is wondering what, you know?
Well, the fact that it's wetlands or, or wet is-
We don't wanna see gas stations and-
Gonna hinder-
A bank or something in the backyard.
Gotta think about what's practical.
Correct.
Can't see a gas station up on a dead-end street.
It's not dead-end.
Well, on a low-volume street.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, uh-
If it's wetlands, it's almost looped.
Correct.
Yeah, Steve.
If you, if you like, I can go down through the land use table. That's fine, no, you, that's fine, no, that's fine, it's just a-
Okay. Anybody else from the public? Yes.
Can you hear me from here or do I have to stand?
I can hear you, but the TV audience may not.
On TV, oh, great. Uh, my name is Carla Bell. I live on the corner of Corvo Street and Solomon, so, um, of course, we've been talking about any potential development in that area and what it might entail, and, uh, thank you for clarifying why you wanna change it back to commercial. On your agenda, you just say from residential to commercial, I'd like that to have commercial two on there, please, uh, so that there's no confusion as to what type of commercial development could be done in that particular area, if in fact it should ever happen. Uh, so if we could please have that changed, I'd appreciate it.
Yep.
Um, other than that, I have no, um, I'm not against changing it, I really don't feel that it changes very much from residential to commercial two. Commercial two also has residential property development, correct, Steve?
Uh-
Somewhat.
A certain amount in a limited capacity, so in a, in a commercial two zone, if a new building is constructed with commercial space on the first floor, residential space is allowed on the second floor, if it's a single-story building, the front portion of the building adjacent to the street, at least fifty percent of that floor area, fifty percent or more, can be commercial with residential to the rear. Um, yes, a, um, certain, certain types of activities that would be residential in nature would be allowed.
Okay. I'm also wondering if it would, if some, some areas were buildable, um, I don't know if it's all swampy or not, but if they were, would there be a buffer between the mall and any development that would happen on that street?
There are setback requirements. Uh, I do not believe that our land use, uh, requires buffers or buffer zones where you would have typically indigenous trees or plantings or, or things or fences, uh, to, to create a divide on.
Okay. It's a, like I said, very, like you said, John, a very quiet neighborhood, mostly residential, um, all residential with a few maybe hair salons thrown in there and daycares. Uh, we'd like to keep it quiet, it has low traffic, some walking by elderly, of course, up and from the elderly housing, and we're hoping that it, it maintains its, uh, the use it has right now, but I guess that's-
Ambiance.
The ambiance, as John said. Maintain our ambiance. And, and I'd invite you up to my home so that you could see how quiet it is there and-
Well, if we have to go, I have no plans to develop that area.
Thank you. And I'm thrilled that you're, uh, thinking of developing down by the Van Buren area. It's nice to feel there could be growth in Caribou like that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Carl.
Anybody else?
Oh.
Seeing none, public hearing close at six-fifty-seven P M. And so I guess we would be looking for a motion to recommend to the city council that this property be rezoned from residential to commercial two.
So when it was, uh, when it was originally switched from commercial to residential, presumably the consideration was that it butts both and you can switch it without spot zoning. It sounds like those same considerations would be just as applicable now.
Yeah.
Yep.
I move we do it.
I second.
Did you get the wording of that motion?
Yes.
Okay, uh, moving seconded, any further discussion? All in favor? Motion carries.
Then we'll sign the recommendations to city council.
All right. Um, next item, new business. Preliminary review of a site design application from Neil Griffith for an additional retail business at sixteen Axis Highway, tax map eleven lot three. Is that one of the items that has been provided to us, Denise?
Why are there two Neil Griffiths? Oh, I'm sorry.
Nope.
Two different, never mind, I'm reading names wrong.
Yeah, for a lack and I'm not doing it.
Okay, so we have a-
It's this one.
We have a plot plan, shows a Van Buren road. Now, this is, uh, Steve, so this is a site design application, there are no separate lots being created.
No, there are not.
So access is not an issue since it's all one private property because there's no creation of a separate lot.
Yes, yes, exactly.
It, the, the plan shows a proposed lot limit. Is that not creating a lot?
We talked about that, uh, Tim?
Yeah, we did, the, your code says we have to identify a lot, so we put a, a line around it.
Put the word lot.
Right.
It's not gonna be deeded out of the-
But, but it is, it is the developer, the developer will retain this and, and develop it, but the code says you gotta have a line around it, so we put a line around it.
Let's, uh, let's open the public hearing on this thing at six-thirty P M. Uh, and see if anybody besides Tim wants to speak to this or, or, Tim, we welcome you to educate us as to what's happening.
Uh, for your record, I remain Tim Roix with, uh, V R Smith Associates.
Nothing's changed there.
Nothing's changed there, no. Uh, the, the proposal in, in front of you is, is, uh, from, uh, Mr. Griffith to construct a building seventy by a hundred feet. Uh, we've identified the, the portion of it that will be retail and a portion of it that would be warehousing. Uh, we did that so we could look into the code and see the number of parking spaces that are required, and we have shown the appropriate number based on that, uh, that equation. We also have got some handicap spaces for parking, sidewalks around it, and, uh, overhead door for, uh, truck traffic to allow, uh, uh, product to be delivered. So we've, we've mapped the site, uh, we've developed the existing conditions plan to show where the contours, where the elevations are. We've got the, uh, the foundation design, the, the floor plan, uh, has been completed, and the site design is complete as you have in front of you. Uh, the fire marshal, we, we've sent off things to be reviewed through, through the fire marshal as well for, for the building. So, um, it will, uh, join, or it'd be part of land that Mr. Griffith currently owns. Uh, access will be, uh, across his private drive out to, uh, the island where you get onto the Van Buren road. Actually, the, the island that, uh, that you turn in and out of on the Van Buren road is, is currently, or I say currently, is owned by the city. So the, the Van Buren road has a right-of-way, but there's a little block of land where that island sits, uh, and that's purposely in there that lines up with, uh, the, the access across the street to the Skyway Plaza, so access will be, will be through, uh, the Van Buren road and into the private drive and to that building.
And Phil, I, I have received a copy of the construction permit back from the state fire marshal's office, so that's in the file.
You, you've received it as in it is, has been approved?
Yes.
By the fire marshal?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, thank you, Tim. Anybody else wanna speak to this proposed, um, site design? Nobody else? Public hearing close at six-thirty-two. Um, and as this is a preliminary review, then our checklist simply addresses the items on page thirty-three and thirty-four of our agenda.
Okay.
Basically to determine-
Does the plan have these items?
Does the plan have these items? Name and address to the owner of record.
Yes.
An applicant. It's on the plan?
Yep.
Okay.
For the application.
Name of the proposed development and location. Does this development have a name? Napa Auto Parts? Okay, yes. Names and addresses of all property owners within five hundred feet.
There are.
Uh, names and-
There's a scale on there.
Yeah, one inch equals forty feet. Um, I don't know if we have-
That was identified, uh, through the municipality, through their notification process.
Okay.
We, we did notify the, uh, butters or property owners within five hundred feet.
So that's been taken care of.
But it should be on the plan.
Or in the application.
On the plan.
Well, we, we go up to the final, we'll add it for this.
And I think, I think you're only looking at three or four.
Well, there won't, five hundred feet, uh, it's just gonna be to the north.
Right.
Whoever, towards Limestone, I mean, uh, I don't know. Uh, I guess you just have to show the property owners that are around the property. There won't be more than one or two or three. Uh, so that's not there.
Well, we, we show the, the, we show the owner to the, to the north.
You do?
You, you may not have it on that sheet, but in, in the plan set, the rest of the plan set this year.
It's the Solomon Family Trust.
Exactly, yeah. So within five hundred feet, there's one or two in there, and that's to the north, we have it on, on the site.
Okay, all right, that's good.
Copy of the deed to the property, option to purchase, et cetera. So have you provided a copy of the deed to the city?
Yeah, for the application.
Okay, Steve, you receive that?
I believe so.
Cause it's not in our packet.
Was this, was this put out to the public hearing? This lot?
I just did that five minutes ago.
Yeah, but was it put out to the public for a public hearing?
Yes, it was.
Okay.
Oh, you mean, was the public notified that there would be a public hearing?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, Tim, you're saying you did include a copy of the deed? Well, we'll move forward while Steve looks.
I don't seem to have it in the folder. But actually, they have identified the, it's the, uh, Richard Solomon trustee of the Corey G. Solomon Family Trust, uh, to the north, due north, and then, uh, off to the northwest, or the city of Caribou, uh, is also on a butter. And then the Van Buren roads to the west and, but I, I don't seem to have in the file too the copy of Neil's deed.
He would be able to attach it as part of the, the application he's filed in.
Oh.
Okay. Not Tim's first rodeo.
That's for sure.
So we'll presume it's there. Names and addresses of all consultants working on the project. Are you the one and only, Tim?
Yes.
One complete set of plans, twenty-four by thirty-six, and ten complete sets of plans, eleven by seventeen. Yep, I think we're good with that. Plans to show the following elements, graphic scale and north arrow, yes. Location and dimensions of any existing or proposed easements and copies of existing covenants or deed restrictions.
That would be in the deed that put-
Location and dimensions of existing proposed easements and copies of existing covenants, yeah, and deed restrictions, that would be in the deed. Name, registration number, and seal of land surveyor, architect, engineer, or similar professional prepared the plan. Uh, we have your name, Tim. Uh, you have a registration number on your, uh-
My P E number is nine-five-four-eight.
Is that on your plans?
It will be when they're stamped.
Okay, okay.
I'm surprised that we need that for a call here.
Property boundaries, land area, zoning designations of the site regardless of whether all or part is being developed at this time. Property boundaries, we have, land area, we have, zoning designations, what is the zoning out there? Is that a C-two?
I would believe so.
Yes.
Okay, so we know what that is. Si-shaped location, location of existing and proposed buildings on the site.
Sure.
Okay. Access for emergency vehicles, location and layout design for vehicular parking, circulation areas, loading areas, walkways. Yeah, you've got driveways and everything on that. Location and, uh, and names of streets, rights of way within two hundred feet adjacent to the proposed development. Okay, proposed finished grades and graphic arrows indicating direction of stormwater runoff. I see you got your elevation lines. What are you doing for, is there catch basins or what are you doing for stormwater on this?
Nope, it's going to go, there's a ditch on the north side of the property now, uh, that's in place and the stormwater-
Naturally.
And go into, to the ditches that are there now, continue on.
Okay. Conceptual treatment of on and off-site stormwater management facilities. Conceptual treatment of on and off-site stormwater management. Well, we've got some onsite stormwater management. I don't think, I'm not sure why the off-site-
Don't know if that's even applicable.
That would be if, if necessary, there are times that a project may require the water to be collected and then to be, uh, redistributed in other areas of the lot to be sheeded.
Like a pond.
Possibly.
Yeah, retention pond.
Okay, okay. Location and size of existing and proposed sewer and water services, including connections.
There are no public utilities that serve that lot. Currently, the dealership has its own well, it has a pump station, and we'll continue with that. There are no utilities that, in that.
Okay. Conceptual treatment of landscaping, buffers, greens, and plantings. I don't know if there's anything, that's, yeah. Location of outdoor storage areas, fences, signage, and accessory structures. Get any signs on this?
Only on the building.
Only on the building. Okay. No fence? No accessory structures. Context map illustrating the area surrounding the site which will be affected by the proposal, including all streets, sidewalks, intersections, stormwater drainage ways, sewer lines, pump stations, nearby properties. There's basically not much out there but a bunch of woods and some wild animals.
Phil?
Yes?
I asked Tim, uh, it shows on the, uh, out at the curb cut, it shows the symbol for a sign. Is that a new sign? Would that be an existing, already there?
That's already, it's there, yeah.
Okay, we good with M?
Yeah.
Uh, provided, yep, okay. And proposed signage, exterior lighting, you will have exterior lighting?
There'll be, the, the lot is lit now, there'll be a few additional lights specific to the building, but the park lot's lit now.
You got any on that?
As far as I'm concerned, it's an NA because you're just plunking a building down- As far as I'm concerned, it's an NA because you're just plunking a building down in the middle of a car lot. That's already lit.
Okay, well, there might be, well, whatever. I'm going to check it off. Okay, so, that takes care of the preliminary.
Just as far as we need to go.
So, at this point...
A member would make a motion to schedule a final review for the next scheduled meeting?
Thank you. That's what I was looking for. I make a motion that we do a final site design review at our next scheduled meeting?
Yep, in public hearing.
In public hearing.
We moved?
Well, go ahead.
No, go ahead, I'm not.
Alright, I'll...
Go ahead. Moving seconded, any further discussion? All in favor? Motion. Was your hand up?
Yes, sorry.
Motion carries.
I wish you didn't see him.
Okay. You went wrong. Preliminary review of a site design application from United Veterans of Maine for a supportive living site for military veterans with agricultural training at three fifty-eight Washburn Street, map seven lot forty-five J. And we will open a public hearing on this matter at six forty-three. And we have a representative of the project at the podium. Please identify yourself.
My name is John DeVoe, I'm the executive director for the United Veterans of Maine. And what we brought forward is, we have plans for property that we are finally, excuse me, finalizing the, more, excuse me. Let me back up. We're actually signing the final documents on the fifteenth of June for the property. North State is currently, has already finished up the registry of deeds. And the paperwork is ready for, to be picked up and taken care of on the fifteenth. And what we have in front of you, I believe you guys all have copies. Do you have this one as well? Okay. What that one shows is the lot that we are going to be owners of on the fifteenth and the proposed lots for the next four duplexes that we're going to, we'd look to build there. We had Dave Silver come out and do a proposed plan for our wastewater disposal systems. Those should be in the packet as well. As well as the designs for the duplexes in which the veterans will be able to come and stay at. I'm not sure if you have any questions or...
If you look on the large sheet, the copy of the tax map with the, where it shows the cul-de-sac and roadway that goes behind the windmill, as the cul-de-sac shows where there are four structures to be located, those structures will measure each of them twenty-four by twenty-four with a common wall dividing two living quarters. They each have a private bathroom. And then just off to the side of the four, location of the four cabins, you'll see two rectangles where the leach fields will be located. Each leach field will have a thousand gallon septic tank connected to it. And I believe it's two hundred and twelve gallons per day the leach field is sized for, which is the sizing for, what, four bedrooms?
Four bedrooms.
So, two cabins to a leach field, and the other two cabins will go to the other leach field. Approximately a hundred and fifty feet back from the roadway to the edge of the first cabin, or the cabin closest to the north.
Are there plans, presuming this is successful, for expansion?
The, right now, we're hoping that we don't end up with more than eight. If we do have to, we're going to look into finishing off on around the north to the northeast of the cul-de-sac. And we have, basically northeast of where those four would come in on that cul-de-sac, we have ample space there for a second and third, or excuse me, a third and fourth septic system to be put in. And then we can also bring it around on the, it would be the southeast section as well. So, we could have ultimately up to twelve.
Where's your drinking water going to come from? Where's the well?
We're going to be drilling a well, SD's is going to be coming in and...
You know where it's located, going to be located?
What we're looking at is on the northwest side of the buildings.
The parcel is what, John, twelve?
Twelve and a half acres.
So, there's plenty of room to be a hundred, a hundred feet away from the...
West is this way, north is that way. Okay, so up here?
Yeah.
Basically, where he's got the duplex cabins, if you were to go straight up from that, there's a little pin mark, the way it looks. Take...
You say a little tick mark?
Tick mark, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I see it.
Okay.
Okay.
Only concern is to keep your leach field out of your well water.
Definitely. Yeah, the leach field is actually, on both ends is lower in elevation than where we're going to be putting our wells. That spot specifically is a higher spot on the property. And that's why the leach fields are both, could be, or all of four, if we end up with them, could actually be on a lower end. There's a natural drain that comes back if you go to where it says on the Washburn Road, and then you have the two-two-three-point-three, and it connects to the road.
Yep.
There's a drain, a natural drain that we're going to be, we're going to be improving that comes down along the backside of where the cabins are now. So, what we're doing is we're going to be just cleaning that up so that we have a water control right there.
When you say backside, are you referring to the tree line?
No, if you were to come to the...
Or are you referring to alongside of Washburn Street?
Right, if you take Washburn Street, and you see where the two-two-three-point-three is?
Yes.
That intersects?
Yes.
Okay, come back in between, and there's a natural drain that's in there.
Like a ditch?
Yeah.
And does it go into the woods?
It does. So, that helps us actually with our water runoff, and it'll actually help with our septic and everything else.
Steve, have you been out to physically inspect this location?
I'm one of the project workers.
Oh, good.
It's amazing what a chocolate chip cookie will do.
Doesn't take much. I'm still waiting for my cookie.
The... And Steve, you're obviously, oh, never mind. I was looking at the R nineteen insulation in the attic, and I'm thinking, that's not sufficient, but then I see there's R thirty of cellulose blowing over it, so...
The cabins are totally in compliance with the Maine uniform building and energy conservation codes.
You going to heat these with a heat pump?
Actually, we're in debates right now if we're going to go with electric versus the heat pumps. It's not going to take a whole lot to heat that one room.
I would think the heat pumps would be the way to go.
Cost is going to be the initial factor. I can get a heater, a baseboard heater, a lot cheaper than I can get a heat pump. So, we really have to, you know, sit down and look at initially what our costs are going to be when we build these.
Understood. Looks like a very good project.
Now, if somebody wanted to donate eight of them. Just saying.
Or one as a starter would be nice.
Yeah, you really need eight thermostats, so you need eight separate units. Any other people have any questions? Anything else to offer us?
No, sir.
Any other members of the public want to address this project?
Oh, I would. This is the project that was, has been promoted. We did a telethon, what was that, John, back in...
March, no, it's not.
We did a telethon with the local television station. And I think we raised in excess of forty-five thousand dollars. Cary Medical Center has been very supportive of the whole project, have been part of the work that's going on today. How many trips to Augusta have you made?
I don't remember anymore.
He knows in the state ninety-five quite well, though.
And we've had a number of organizations donate materials to this project. SW Collins, Aristic Trusses, let's see, Pleasant River, Huber, Lumber Liquidators, Caton Forest, Aristic Foam Insulators, SD Wells, Pella, Pella Windows. And a couple of different individuals are donating for labor. As well as Job Corps is continuing to assist us in our project. So, we've got a lot of support behind us. We have members here, obviously, from our membership who truly believe in what we're doing. And we'd like, again, like I've mentioned in the first few times that we've met, you know, we'd like to have Cariboo's backing on this, so...
Anybody else? Called a public hearing at six fifty-three. Okay, we have a checklist of items that we are to look at to see if they are included with the application. And Steve, I'm going to ask you to chime in in the event that some of these things that may not be in front of us that are in your file. Name, address, and owner of record and applicant, if different?
Yes.
You have that? Name of the proposed development location and location, yes, we have that. Name and address of all property owners within five hundred feet of the property.
It's right there in front of you.
We did do notifications to the neighbors on Washburn Street and I think across to York Street and Mitchell, Mitchell Street.
Copy of the deed to the property or option to purchase?
There's probably a purchase and sale agreement there somewhere, right? They haven't closed on it yet.
Yes.
Right, John, we're under contract.
Names and addresses of all consultants?
It's in the application, Silver.
Okay, okay. Complete set of plans, twenty-four by thirty-six, I see them right there. Plans including... Plans to be included. Boundary survey, stormwater erosion, sediment, finished grading, site improvement, building elevations, and structural plans. You've addressed most of these things, I'm not sure if they're in that level of detail.
They're not, being that there's the existing Washburn Road, the topography along the Washburn Road takes care of all of the stormwater drainage, it's a substantial ditch. There's no evidence of a collection of spring melting that occurs in the field. There's not site water issues now.
The only issue would be the final building elevations need to be up high enough to...
And the elevations that they're looking at would be the side, side, front, and rear elevations that should have been in the black and white plans for the buildings. So, it's basically a single-story, eight-foot wood frame construction with a truss roof system.
That's elevation.
So, that'll give you the elevations, location of doors and windows. There is, we do have the intention of slight change, that the buildings will have an additional six feet of concrete slab in front of the two entryway, the two private, private entryway doors with an overhanging shed-style roof. So, any, anyone that is staying in the units will have a front porch to maybe go out and sit in a lawn chair or...
So, these are not, are these only on slabs, is no, is there a frost wall?
No frost wall, they'll be sitting on a blueboard insulation that meets the R-value requirements for slab construction. Being that it's a single-story building, again, that meets the building code requirements for foundations.
Okay. Graphic scale and arrow north.
That's a copy of our tax map that I transcribed the location of the cabins onto.
Locations and dimensions of any existing or proposed easements and copies of existing covenants or deed restrictions.
None.
None? Name, registration numbers, and seal of land surveyor, architect, engineer, or similar professional. Is that Silver guy?
Dave did the leach field design, Dave Silver came down and did the leach field designs. But it's an existing parcel of land, it's not being divided or subdivided.
Yep. Property boundaries, land areas, zoning designations of the site, is this an R or three?
R three.
Yep, okay. Size, shape, location of existing and proposed buildings, yes. Access for emergency vehicles, location and layout design of vehicle parking, circulation areas, loading.
So, there'll be a road that comes in between the pole barn structure and the, with the office area that used to be Phil's florist shop, the retail store. So, it's all developed gravel in front of the existing, I think, three or four greenhouses that are remaining. We're going to have a road that goes behind the windmill to the cabins with the cul-de-sac, so plenty of easy access for emergency vehicles or deliveries or whatever.
Between the cul-de-sac and the buildings, is that set of lines represent a driveway?
Walkways.
Walkways, so the inhabitants will not have vehicles, or they will be parking them elsewhere?
The site has ample parking in front of the office. And if need be, we can develop a parking area adjacent to the buildings. Plenty of room.
The cul-de-sac, trying to remember the street. Have you spoken to the fire chief as far as any minimum size for his largest fire truck to make the turn?
No.
Because, I'm trying to remember, there's a development, as you leave Cariboo, actually take a left, I think it's on the, off of Powers Road, Spruce, Spruce something. Spruce Ridge, I believe, the original plan for that, the cul-de-sac at the top of that, had to be expanded after it was initially proposed because it was too tight a circle for the fire trucks to go around.
In this, as we've looked at it, doesn't necessarily have to be a center circle. It could be just a circular paved area. So, emergency vehicles could just pull straight in and still have access to everything.
Okay, so access for emergency vehicles, driveways, parking space. Location and names of streets, it's not going to be streets, is there?
It's Washburn.
Yep, Washburn. Procedural finished grades, graphic arrows indicating direction of stormwater, it's going to follow whatever the natural...
It's already...
Terrain, yep. Conceptual treatment of on and off water, yes, okay. Location and sizes of existing proposed sewer and water services, so you've shown us the well and the leach fields. Conceptual treatment of landscaping, buffers, trees, plantings, there's trees growing naturally in that field?
So, all of the trees to the, I'm going to say the south side of the lot, they're all remaining, there's no changes to the wooded line.
How far into the wood line does the property go?
It goes all the way back over to York Street, actually.
Yeah.
Yep, quite a bit of woods there. Location of outdoor storage areas, fence, signage. You're utilizing the existing Phil's greenhouse?
Where Phil's sign was will be the Dogland Schedule...
Concept map.
...home sign.
Phil Street in the area, yes, ladies. Okay, and that's good. Proposed exterior lighting, is there going to be lighting, any lighting on that, or is that just...
Only the lighting required, lighting at the access into the buildings. All doors entering, entering living quarters are required to have an exterior light fixture.
Okay, so, any further discussion? So, at this point, we need a motion for final review. And with public hearing at our next scheduled meeting.
So, move.
Moved and seconded, all in favor? Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Other business. Revisit the site design application from Kit Griffin. Revisit the site design application from Kit Griffin to be an auto recycler. Okay, I...
Make sure you don't figure it out.
Can I make a suggestion?
Certainly.
Amy Belanger.
You want to skip?
I'm just making the suggestion that we skip through this way now and take care of Tammy and...
Okay, okay. So you want to go to Roman numeral seven?
Yes.
Public input, request from Tammy Belanger to have a dog grooming business at thirty-two Robert Street. Okay, should we call this a public hearing?
No.
It's not, it's...
Okay, go ahead. Hi, Tammy.
Hi there. I appreciate that you're going to listen to my, to my pleading. I have been wanting to do this for about twenty years. Unfortunately, I've never had the opportunity to do so because training is not local. At the time, twenty years ago, I had four young children. I would have had to have left the area for four months and gone to the Portland area to, to obtain my training to become a certified dog groomer, which obviously I could not do that with, with four young children. Three of those children have now grown and are on their own. I have a fourteen-year-old at home who's entering high school in the fall. The timing is right. A business opportunity has, has come up. Business has been in place in Prescott for seventeen years. The owner, the current owner is here with me tonight. She has placed her business up for sale, hoping to relocate from Maine to a different state to be with family. So this is something that, you know, I didn't just wake up one day and decide I felt like doing. This is something that I've wanted to, to do for a long, long time. I have four dogs of my own. Right now, I know within the city of Cariboo, there are just shy of twelve-hundred dogs licensed within the city. And I have confirmed that with, with Jane Farren. We have a facility in Van Buren that just recently closed, from what I'm understanding. So a lot of those people are now calling the Prescott facility. Current clientele is in place, have been notified that there is a possibility this business will relocate to Cariboo. None of them seeming to have an issue with that. Right now, from what I'm understanding from the current owner, approximately fifty percent of her business is from outside of Prescott, twenty-five percent from Cariboo. So the other twenty-five percent is coming from Washburn, Fort Fairfield, Limestone, Van Buren, Connor, Woodland, a lot of local areas, you know, loc, I guess, local to Cariboo. I've, you know, I was born and raised in Cariboo. I believe in supporting my community. I've never had to do anything like this before, so I'm extremely nervous, so bear with me. So, you know, I'm not sure. I do know the zoning laws, so if I had known that chocolate chip cookies would help, I would have baked you a batch. I know that the current, the current ordinance does say...
I need the reputation.
If you hadn't brought it up, I wouldn't have brought it up, but I'm glad you did. I know that the, the current ordinance does say, you know, to have a business in an R-1 zone, you have to reside on that property. And I respect that. We have hairdressers, we have, you know, daycare, we have, I believe there's a local florist, who you all probably know on Garden Circle, there are, you know, hairdressers on Rose Street. Lots of different people within the city that are in R-1 zones currently that are allowed to operate a business. I'm looking at a business that would generate maybe six to seven cars a day, no more than that. This is an appointment-only business. I will not have any retail, no boarding, anything like that, but I will be on the property probably eight to ten hours a day, five to six days a week. That's pretty much living there, in my opinion. It is a two-story building, a two-bedroom apartment downstairs, two-bedroom apartment upstairs. The property was will to me, and I did not know it was going to be will to me when my aunt passed away. It was quite a surprise. So I've maintained the property, the taxes. Probate just finished up in May because it had to go through probate, I guess because of state regulations with regard to next of kin. My aunt and uncle did not have children of their own, so it had to move through probate even though there was a will, and I was named personal representative in sole heir. I'm not really sure what else I can tell you, other than, like I said, I really, you know, this is something I've wanted for a very long time. It's not going to impact local neighbors. As a matter of fact, I have a statement from the closest neighbor to me at thirty Robert Street, who has indicated they don't have an issue with this at all. The other surrounding properties to mine are also, I guess, can be kind of considered commercial. They're apartment buildings that, you know, the owners don't live in. They're currently rented to, to tenants.
What are you going to do with the upstairs?
The upstairs would be storage. I do not, let me, let me step back a bit. I attempted to rent both apartments for a period of time. My husband worked in management, for RLW Management, for ten years. He was not thrilled at the prospect of me renting because he has seen the worst of rentals. You know, he would go in and have to clean them up and, and, you know, do the maintenance, do the painting, do the, the cleaning. It was not an enjoyable experience for him. So when this came into our possession and I said to him, you know, I want to keep this, it's been in the family for many, many years, and I, I would like to, to attempt to rent. His, his comments were, were not all that supportive of that, but of course, in the end, he did go with me on this and said, you know, I'll support you, but I don't recommend starting out with a year lease. Start with a six-month lease. Test the waters. He knew what he was talking about. I did some serious screenings prior to the tenants moving in both of the apartments. You know, income background checks, everything you can think of, reference checks, previous landlord references, everything. I was pretty thorough. And unfortunately, after the six months were over and those, both tenants from both apartments vacated, there was substantial damage to each, each apartment unit. I included utilities because the current, the way the, the building is set up, there's only one meter and there's one furnace and one water heater. So I did rent, including all utilities. So people upstairs had their windows open half the time all winter. That was not, you know, it was in the lease. I did specify in the lease a lot of stipulations that I expected, and that just didn't, it just didn't fly. So when they did leave and, and we noticed that all of the damage, it was at that point in time, I said, no, I'm not doing this again. So the property is now vacant. It has been since April. I do not plan to rent it again. I would like to continue to keep it in the family. It's, it's, you know, it's a good, solid building. It's, it's not a, it's not a building that is, I consider, in any way dilapidated. There are two buildings next to my property that have been, I believe they've been vacant for several years, and they are in dire need of repair or tear down. So I would be doing some extensive exterior renovation to this building also, which would help improve the, you know, improve the looks of the neighborhood, raise the, the property values maybe in the area just a bit, too, so.
I, I personally would like to see you succeed. And I'm thinking that the only issue that we're having, Steve, this is an R-1?
I believe so. On the zoning, zoning map for Robert Street, it looks like the, on the, the salt side of Robert Street, the first two, first two parcels of land, well, the first parcel is in the R-2 zone, and then as soon as you go beyond the first house on the left of the start of Robert Street, it goes into the R-1. And I think Amy's property is the property where there's, you go down the hill a little bit in the street that goes left and right right there?
Yes, it's, it's just a bit before that.
Myrtle Street to the right, and I, I don't see a name, that little short street that goes into a couple of houses.
It's before, it's, I know where you're talking about. It's before that. It's actually right at the bottom of, well, almost right at the bottom of the hill. It's directly across from the public housing.
Okay, after you get down, which puts it clearly, excuse me, clearly into the R residential one zone. And the, and the problem that Tammy's facing is the land use table for pet grooming is just the word no.
Flat-out no?
Flat-out no, which means it's not appealable or, for whatever, for whatever reason, the ordinance just says a flat-out no for pet grooming. And sometimes the board might be able to look at things if it were a home occupation where the applicant resides at the home to be able to conduct a home occupation. So for whatever reason, when they came up with the list of no's, pet grooming in the R-1, for whatever reason, is disallowed.
So now, let me ask a couple of questions. Well, I guess my first question, Steve, is do you have any suggestions on what could be changed or what has to be changed in order to be able to grant her request? Is, is the fact, would it be that the land use table for that particular item needs to be changed from a no to a yes?
If you were to take a look at the second page of our land use table for the R-1 zone, the word, the predominant word is the word no. I mean, it just goes the, there's got to be all, I mean, all these twenty no's in a row.
Without changing the law, the option would be one of those zoning board of appeals?
The zoning board of appeals can't, cannot grant an appeal, being that this is not, would not meet the criterion for undue hardship.
Okay.
Being that there are four elements for, for undue hardship. So the, the building is previous, is already residing in the R-1 zone. It's not something that happened that would cause, you know, for Tammy to be able to use the undue hardship part of it.
Let me, so now, so what I'm hearing is even if she were residing in the house, she still would not be able to do it?
I believe that to be true. And that's where sometimes the board can have some flexibility if they were to look at it as a home occupation with conditions of hours of operation type things.
So your three children that have left the nest?
Mm-hmm.
Are they living in Cariboo? Anybody?
One of them lives in Cariboo.
Would that one be interested in living upstairs?
No, she owns her own house, she and her husband.
That's true.
I can send my fourteen-year-old to live there if you'd like. I'm sure he'd love that.
If it's a he?
I'll send my husband, that's mine, too. I can, I can tell you that I want to say maybe less than twenty years ago, maybe about twenty years ago, there was a dog grooming business in an R-1 zone on Sweden Street. Now, I don't know if any of you remember that, and I can't, claws and, claws and paws? Claws and paws. And she, she did, but she did reside on the property, but she wasn't in R-1 zone. And then there was another dog grooming business, and I, I don't know the address, Kay Netto. It was off Sweden Street.
Kinley Street.
Kinley Street. She has a dog grooming business for thirty years. Again, R-1 zone. So, you know, we have all of this business right now in Prescott. These people drop off an animal, hang out for two hours. They're going to utilize eateries.
They're going to...
Exactly. Let's stop letting that business go to Prescott. Let's, let's bring it in. They're going to go to SW Collins, Sleepers, they're going to go everywhere in Cariboo.
I am sympathetic to your cause, and I'm trying to find a legal way to do this.
Right.
It would require the city council to make a change to the city's ordinance.
Have you considered putting the property up for sale and taking the proceeds and buying another property?
I, I have.
Would you be able to?
I have, and I've shown the property about six times. And, you know, the city right now has this property assessed at about fifty-four thousand dollars. I've had an offer of ten thousand dollars. I've had an offer of fifteen thousand dollars. I cannot give it away. This is a very solid property. We redone, we've redone the entire inside of the upstairs, the majority of the downstairs. We've done all new plumbing, electrical. This was before I rented. And the only thing left for me to be doing is two more windows in this building and the exterior siding. That's it. So I'm not going to give the property away. Can't do it.
So then, is, is our only avenue a request to the city, excuse me, a request to the city council to change that no to a yes in the land use table?
I wouldn't say yes automatically. I would say planning board.
Or, or planning board, yes, with planning board?
PB, if it were R, R-2 zone, then it would be a planning board. The plane, already as the land use table is now, the R-2 zone, the planning board would have the discretion to allow a dog grooming activity in the R-2, regardless if a person resides in the building or not.
But that's changing the zoning, and we don't want to do spot zoning. And so you're going to get more resistance to changing the R-1 to R-2, I think, than...
Well, how hard is it for us, for the city council to change the no to a PB in the table?
They hold a public hearing and open it up for public comment, and then they ask for a motion from the board in a second, and then they vote.
I think we just need a motion.
But I think, I think if we're going to go through that exercise, we might want to look at a few of the other no's.
That's what I was just going to say, that.
If there's a column of no's.
We might as well, because if we're trying to open up so people can do business in Cariboo.
We need to notice them, too, right? Phil's going to say?
Yes, sir.
This is all good dialogue, but the thing about it is you need to look at the definition of a residential zone, which basically recommends that it's not a business zone or a thing that's of that nature, all right? So you're more, you're doing more than just changing a no to a yes and so on and so forth because you do that. You open up everybody's, everybody's neighborhood for businesses and so on and so forth. And in some, some of the development areas in the community, there are covenances in people's deeds that they can't have a home business or anything like that, too. So all it takes is somebody that lives next door to take that to court, and then that will nullify that, and that will come back here also. So it's not just a matter of, I just want to say what, say what I'm saying, so you understand that it's not just a matter of sitting there sending us a note and saying, change the zone because, okay? You have to look at the whole concept of it, all right? And it's a business, and businesses are set up in the business, in business districts. So I just want you to know that. So it's not a matter of trying to circumvent what's out there already, it's a matter of doing it with the whole thought process in it.
Right, and my...
And the impact that you're having community-wide and not just in one location.
Well, my thoughts on it are not approaching it like it's necessarily the same kind of a business as something else. I'm approaching it more along the lines of the same thing as a daycare. If someone living on my street can go and have twenty-five kids running screaming in the yard, then you can have my dog washed.
I understand exactly what you're saying, but most of the home, the daycares in the homes are occupied by the person that's running the daycare, so it turns it into the home occupation, which is an allowable function.
Right, and instead, we're just switching this a little to homeowner occupation.
Let me, let me ask the question of, of the two of you, the seller and the buyer. Would you happen to know approximately what percentage of households in this area have a pet? I mean, is it over fifty percent?
Oh, yeah.
Definitely, definitely.
Seventy-five percent?
I would say probably a good eighty-five percent.
And so therefore, if we ask the city council to allow a planning board for a pet grooming service, I would think eighty percent of the households in this town would say yes.
Of course.
And so I don't think we're going to get much resistance. It's not like we're asking to put up gas stations next to everybody's house. You know, and I think that the fact that pets is part of human society, I think that we would stand a chance to get, I mean, our best shot is to change the no to a planning board. As far as changing a whole bunch of other no's, I would tread lightly or carefully on that because we don't want to sabotage the effort by making it too radical of a change.
Well, my, my thought was make, let's try to make it a little bit less focused.
Oh, in other words, don't zoom in on just pets, but, but if eighty-five, eighty percent of the people had pets...
What if we just eliminated pet grooming? And then it could be subsumed by some other potential, potential home occupation, and then we don't, and then we're not...
Yeah, but we're already having issues with the fact that if, if somebody creates a new...
If it's not in the table, we have bigger problems.
If it's not in the table and somebody comes forward with a new technology, our solution has been to add it to the table as opposed to remove, you know, if the table is silent on something, then we, we are supposed to add to it. But...
Now, this property's in close proximity to the R-2? Somewhat close? Three or four lots.
I think we have R-2 only along South Main Street. So on the, actually on the right side of Robert Street, I want to say is the first property, the church?
Yes.
Yes.
Which would be in a commercial...
That's commercial.
Commercial two. And then I think behind that is a, is a house the fellow drives tractor-trailer, maybe, if I remember that right?
Yes, you're right.
That's in a commercial two zone.
And that is... And that is literally maybe, that's less than 100 feet away from my property. That's just straight up the hill. I can see it from my property.
The next two lots, before, just before you get to Myrtle Street, that's where the R1 zone changes over to the C2. On the south side of Robert Street, it's where the R2 runs from there to the cemetery.
But if the whole of Robert Street was R2, this would be fine?
It would be allowed with planning board review and approval in, in the R2 zone.
But to change the zoning, we gotta go to the city council?
Right, and there are things on this R1 listed, like bed and breakfast. I mean, so you can have a bed and breakfast in an R1. It doesn't say you have to have a homeowner occupied, but it says bed and breakfast. And it's the same thing with the daycare and night care, apparently.
And if, think of the R2, which is intended for multi-unit residential dwellings. At the end of the street is a multi-unit apartment complex.
The majority, actually, the majority of the street is multi-unit.
Any other rental properties and...
I'm just wondering which would, which would have more resistance, converting the R1 to R2, or adding the pet grooming to R1?
You might find it easier to change the zone to an R2.
Now, we have a number of zoning changes that we've already sent to the city council?
I, we haven't gone that far yet.
We haven't sent them yet? We're about to send them?
We're very close.
I'm afraid that, that the, if we include this in our zoning changes, it's gonna get bogged down. It's gonna get bogged down with, you know, I'm trying to expedite this. I presume the seller doesn't wanna wait a year for this to take place.
We're finalizing the purchase, sales agreement next week. Closing will be probably right around October 1st. So, you know, my, my hope is that I'll be able to relocate to my vacant property by then.
So you're buying the business either way, and you're gonna open it in Prescott and move it to Caribou when legally you can do so?
That is, that is my hope. I mean, I've contemplated remaining in Prescott, but I live in Caribou.
So you're saying October?
I, yeah, that's my, my plan is to...
Well, we might get our zoning changes through the city council by October. So do we just wanna add this R1 to R2 to our list of zoning changes that we're bringing to the city council?
To determine that, well, Robert Street, and you might wanna look at the neighborhood. Sincock and York Street also have multiple rental properties, apartment houses.
So as that goes down the hill and wraps around the corner, because RLW has apartments around the corner there to the left.
Yes, back in, back in here and then to the right.
So that's still an R1?
Residential 1.
It would make more sense to change it to an R2, I guess, 'cause that is, there is a multifamily housing there. That would make more sense.
And, and actually, Robert Street, Myrtle Street, all around what's called Caribou Street, which goes back to the picnic area. And then Sincock Street and York Street both have multiple, multi-unit.
So I know there's a couple houses there that are rentals.
And I believe Grove Street, which is also right there, is zoned commercially, I think, right now.
Well, the, the side where the church is and close to Colin, where Colin Stream flows down through there.
Right.
So the north side of Grove Street is in a commercial zone, and then once you go past, what's the name of the place on the corner? Somebody's Place.
Oh, Hank's Place, yes, yes, grooming house.
Once you're beyond Hank's Place, then it becomes residential 1 all the way around Grove Street.
Yes, those are all multifamily on Grove Street.
Yeah. So it makes more sense to do an R2.
So let's, so let's, let's add it, let's add, changing it to an R2?
Well, we're gonna do another workshop. Let's make sure it's on the agenda for the workshop.
Can you just clarify for me too, please? R2, you're still telling me that I have to reside there, or no?
No, that's, that's where the, the planning board can approve a pet grooming occupancy.
Okay, I see what you're saying.
With their review, but in, in the R1, the way the land use table and the city's ordinance says just...
Well, I don't know.
Right, but she's asking in an R2, yes, we can grant it, but does she have to reside there?
No.
Good, okay.
Okay, good.
Yeah, I guess it's fair to say at this point, the best we can do is, is plan on look, seriously looking at, at a zoning change for that neighborhood.
All right. So can you give me some idea of the process moving forward? I mean, you know...
Well, the process is, first of all, we've been having meetings discussing a number of zoning changes throughout the city of Caribou. And we're on the verge of sending all of those to the city council.
Right.
And the city council is gonna, are they gonna have to have two meetings, a preliminary and a final, or do they just, they're gonna have to have a public hearing about the zoning changes?
Yes, sir, it's the city council.
Well, what will happen is you'll send it up there, and they'll introduce the ordinance of the first meeting, and advertise it, and the second meeting will do the public hearing and take action.
Now, you said ordinance. This is zoning change.
We're changing the ordinance.
Okay, 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 okay.
That's what you do. You introduce it.
Yep.
Okay, then you'll schedule the public hearing from the introduction, and then...
So it takes...
We're meeting right now, twice a month, okay?
Oh, that's good.
That may change.
Summer's coming.
Okay, so it might take, I'm hoping within a couple of months.
Okay.
If you're not acquiring the business till October, then I'm hoping it'll be, if it's not...
Right.
We have a chance.
Yeah, it might be done by then, and if not, it shouldn't be too long after.
Okay. I need to know this, because I still have renovation to do to the building, but I don't wanna put, you know, a huge amount of money into it if this isn't...
You wanna pay attention to the public notices of the city council meetings.
Right.
And what's on their agenda.
Okay.
And there should be something showing up within a couple of meetings about changing zoning within the city of Caribou.
Okay, I will do that. Great.
It is a multi-month process though.
Right, understood, understood.
June, October's got a way to come.
Okay, good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for trying to bring business to town.
While we're on the subject of zoning, I have a draft of a letter from us to the planning board regarding the...
We got the planning board.
Excuse me, from us to the city council, which I need you, you guys to approve for me to sign and send off. This has to do with changing the, the zoning along Access Highway.
Okay, yeah, I've seen this. Okay, the, the letter reads to, okay. And so this is, this is an item that probably requires action on our part. The planning board has held both...
We've already taken the action. I'm just asking you to approve the memo.
Okay, well, the planning board has held both a preliminary and final public hearing to consider recommending an amendment to the Caribou zoning map to delete the RC2 zone on Access Highway from Otter Street to the Madawaska River. This change would absorb this section of Access Highway into the R3 zone. As presently listed in the land use table, neither single wide or double wide mobile homes are allowed to be placed within 300 feet either side of the highway. The Caribou Planning Board has voted unanimously in favor of this change to the zoning map the Caribou Planning Board requests and recommends that the city council also consider and continue the process to amend the Caribou code accordingly. Respectfully submitted, Robert White, Secretary of the Planning Board.
I'll go.
Okay.
Is that gonna be in Monday's package?
Yes.
Yeah.
Well, I can just give it to you right now, Phil.
I, I, I'll channel it through Denise.
There's two mounds.
I know, I've already got the other one signed, 'cause we've already addressed it.
Okay.
Denise wants to come up.
Yeah, can we turn that off? Otherwise, I might have to go. It's just too cold.
Oh, did you wanna shut off?
It's too cold. My nose is freezing, my arms are, and I'm just, yeah, it's freezing.
It's pretty cold in here.
It feels like we're in a fridge or something.
Is it winding down?
I, I like it warm. I don't know about anybody else.
Is there a power switch?
For that, all, you know, 10 bucks, I don't know. We could open the window for a Sunday.
People forget that heat pumps make the air conditioners.
Oh, don't just blink, shut off.
It takes time, Phil. Be patient. Those are two zoning amendments.
Now, I wanna make sure I got it, though, this time.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Do we want, we're getting late here.
Yeah, I was thinking, Kip's not here, and that's, that's odd. Should we table this and give him a warning shot that he ought to come?
I think we need to do the motions to reconsider, get them into the record.
Okay, let me just, okay, we're ready to take that up. Let me just try to railroad through this real quick. I read the, the main revised statutes on the graveyards and et cetera, and had a conversation with Steve. And basically, when we approved this, we did not do it properly, because in this main statute, a permit may not be granted for an automobile graveyard, junkyard, or automotive recycling business within 300 feet of a well that serves a public or private water supply. And I think Steve asked Kip where the well for the neighbor was, and he didn't have a clue. And, and Steve believes it is within 300 feet. And so we should not have granted that without further investigation. And so we discussed the possibility of overturning our prior motion by having the people who moved and seconded to withdraw.
Can I ask a question on that? Like, I know that we're supposed to take care of the city ordinances, but how much of...
State law?
The state law falls on planning board? All of it?
Um, can I just say something?
As long as it's quick. My brain is having a sugar low. You gotta keep us later. You gotta provide cookies.
No, not cookies.
Oatmeal raisin, never mind chocolate chip.
Oh, yes.
Actually, that sounds better bought.
My name is Penny Thompson. I work here as the assessor and code officer. What I passed out was, one of the things, when I was getting ready for the council packet, was about automobile recycling businesses. And you were talking about reading the state statutes. Unfortunately, there's a lot of the ordinances that we have, and also the permitting we have, has not been updated since 1980. There has been substantial work to those state statutes in 93 and again in 2003. So where a local ordinance doesn't, hasn't kept up with that. So now, in that state statute about junkyards and automobile graveyards, it also lists automobile recycling businesses. And our ordinance doesn't say anything about that. And we need to have our ordinance updated to keep up with the state statute, because there's a lot of information in there that just wasn't reviewed. And as I have in this memo, which, a very similar one's gonna be in your packet Monday. And I thought I should bring it to the planning board first, but I'm going to try to get some information from the council about what we need to do between now and the time we can get this ordinance revised, so that we can do things properly. The way the statute is written, someone who wants to have an automobile recycling business needs to have a permit from the municipal officers following a hearing. And there is nothing in our permitting to allow for that. That needs to be updated. But in the meantime, we do have folks that operate automobile recycling businesses that come in for a renewal. And we had one actually this past week that came in for a renewal, and I wouldn't sign it. And of course, I hear that we're not business friendly, and that, that's what people say when they don't get their way, is that we're not business friendly. They don't appreciate the fact that we are trying to do things the right way. And we are not trying to work against them. They're, we're trying to work with them. But we need to do things properly, because when we're not doing things properly, the ones who are doing things correctly are put at a competitive disadvantage to people who are not doing things properly. So the only way to level that playing field is to make sure everyone is doing things properly. And that starts here, in this office, having the ordinance being proper and following the state statute, and having a permitting process that follows the state law. So that's all that is, and I'm not gonna keep you. I just wanted to let you know, and I wanted, it sounds like you've read the statutes, but I have at the bottom of the second page different resources to look at. If anyone wants any copies of those, email me, and I can email them back to you. I have all of them. I have all of them on my desk right now, because this has been a little bit of an obsession because of the Kip Griffin project. When he's come in, I have copied for him, I think, four times, the state statute. I have highlighted for him the things he needs to have, including a plan for any hazardous materials at the business, mercury switches, any fluids that are generated. I have even gone so far as to contact the DEP, and they have been working on a model junkyard operations plan, which they have emailed to me, but he just won't do it. The wells, I've said, you need to tell me where the wells are for the, your neighbor's properties. He says, how am I supposed to know that? I said, knock on the door, ask them where their well is. I mean, you live in the country that people have a well. Public water doesn't go out that far, so that's my story.
If he's not willing to take the initiative to fulfill the requirement, the application requirements, then, then his business goes nowhere.
But that, it doesn't solve the bigger problem. The bigger problem is our ordinance needs to reflect state statute, which it currently does not.
Yeah, we're, we're on board with you there.
Not a problem.
So that's all I have to say, unless anybody has any questions.
Do we have a procedure for undoing something we voted on? It can't be just withdrawing a, a second motion.
Is, if, if you were to have adopted Robert's Rule of Order, and a board brings something on the table and it's, and it's then passed, if the board finds that that may have been passed in error, and I believe as per Robert's Rule of Order, the person that made the motion initially would, would bring it back to the table, whoever had made the second to the motion has to also second it again to bring it back to the table, and then the board can actually open the topic and re-discuss or continue discussion, or change their mind. It's a, I believe that is the process to follow for rescinding or re, rewording.
So my aggravation in all of this is when we had the public hearing last month, Phil had opened public hearing, and when we started checking through all of these, neither one of you had stopped us.
True.
You let us proceed through this checklist, and we all voted on it. So, I mean, at that point, I would've thought that...
And at the beginning of the meeting, I had informed the board that you need to use the state's review criterion that we had provided in the packet, and then the board did not.
Since, since then, I've had conversations with Steve and clarified the fact that we are banking on his guidance and his expertise to not allow us to do things improperly. And that was different than what he's operated under in the past and is now willing to stop us.
It's not necessarily my place to interrupt the board.
Well, if we're doing something wrong, I would think that somebody should stop.
And I think, I think much of this is just how the board had, had been allowed or had been coached over the last few years possibly. But there's, there's many times, the board should be its own entity without external input for much of what the board does. So my capacity with the city, also having worked in code enforcement, a code enforcement officer who works with the board should never advise the board, being that it possibly could be a conflict of interest. If a code enforcement officer feels know about something and it ends up at the board, the board's decision-making process should be based on the, the board's own decisions. I know that sounds kinda like ass on the box, but...
But Penny's the code enforcement officer in Caribou, right?
Right.
And you're not, so...
I'm not.
There wouldn't be a conflict there.
I am the, what, deputy building inspector and local plumbing inspector for Caribou. So...
We've had an extensive conversation.
We've had an extensive conversation with Steve since this all came up about soliciting more input from, from Steve and others to make sure that we stay on track.
And so, what happened in this case, hopefully will never repeat itself because we're asking Penny and Steve to say, hold it.
Well, that's just it. I don't, I don't know what I am supposed to say, or not supposed to say, in the middle of a meeting unless I'm asked. I mean, if I'm asked a question, I'm thinking, is there...
Well, no, at the very least...
But I don't know, I don't know either because I've never had to be the code enforcement officer, and I don't want to be the code enforcement officer, so, you know, I'll do whatever I can.
Now that we know that, this, well, now that I know personally that the state problems are my problems, then, you know, more due diligence will be played on it though, as well. I mean, 'cause we're, the hardest thing I think about being on this board is that you get your packet and you're not allowed to say a thing until you get in that meeting. So, that makes it really, really hard to know, you know, like, you might have questions when you, when you read it, but you can't have discussions because that's a meeting.
Maybe they have discussions, but I mean, you can, you can ask a question, or you can ask...
You can ask town officials, you just can't talk, talk...
To you guys!
Phone contacts. And don't call me if you want information.
You can request information. I have counselors that request information.
Okay.
Phil?
I will say that that's a difficult position to be in, in anything like what you're doing and council or whatever. Personally, when I get my packet, I go through it, one by one by one. I look at what may be in charter perhaps to be, I'll go to the code, look and see what's in the code, and then I'll look at this, and then I'll look at this, and then I go to the state statutes, and I look up what may impact it as far as the state statutes.
Aren't you retired?
Yeah, but I've been doing this a hell of a long, longer than I did retire, and that's the way I do business. And unfortunately, we live by rules, regulatory guidance, and so on and so forth. The other unfortunate thing is we all make mistakes. And it's easy to step up and say we made a mistake and unfortunately, we're gonna have to withdraw what we did until we can correct it. The other thing to look at is, is that the person that comes there and stands in front of you is not to rely on you to tell him what he has to do. He should be prepared when he comes before you. So, in this particular individual's case, 'cause I was here for a good part of it, he came in originally and he wanted to open a used car business. And he was all right with the used car business. And then, he changed his mind and the next thing we hear, I think, we heard something from Stephanie Bowyer. She can't issue him a permit because he doesn't have one from us. Well, if I'm the business person, and I know you are, you find out, what do I need to do to do this? As an example, he didn't do that.
Right, and that's why I said if he can't find out where his neighbor's wells are, well then, fine, the application is never complete.
But what I'm saying, Phil, is he should've known that, and he should've known that that was a requirement of him before he even came to you.
Well, before...
Well, that's probably true.
Yeah.
Not everybody does everything they should.
Yeah, before we go too far, I do want to encourage Penny that if we are having a discussion and we are moving in a direction that you know is not correct, please raise your hand and correct us. I mean, the guy behind you does it all the time, and so, we're used to it, so...
Yeah, I mean, just telling us to slow down, just, we gotta think things over, that's all we need.
Yeah, and the same with Steve. I think we, you know, got that through to Steve. And that's partly because, you know, under the previous staff people that we've had here, they've held us by the hand, you know, and they've, you know, and we've just been the rubber stamp, well, I say the rubber stamp, we, we've, you know, passed things, but there was a full explanation with everything. You know, we got the background, we got the history, we got the concerns, et cetera, et cetera. We tossed them around, we voted ye A and A. But we need some background and some guidance.
Yeah, my own personal experience with prior planning boards has always been that there was someone on the side table, some town planner or someone like that, who was guiding us through the process every step of the way.
And that takes time.
Oh, yeah.
Unfortunately, the problem is, we're so short.
Well, I understand that, but...
That we don't, we don't always have time to...
Well, and we're all learning.
We don't have a person that's devoted to being a full-time planner or even a full-time code officer, but we're very grateful to Steve because Steve is doing a great job and putting a lot of time in to working with the planning board.
Yeah.
If he didn't, I mean, I don't know who would because I don't know where we would find the time.
Well, and the planning board is...
And it's very important, and it's very important this time of year especially because you know, everyone wants to get their projects sent and they want them done yesterday.
Yeah.
And I'd like to add to Penny's, I hope I'm only here temporarily.
We understand.
We're sorry.
I hope, I honestly hope the city will find you a planner.
Well, I've told you before that I applaud your willingness to assist, that you're in the, you're at the peak of your knowledge acquired over the last 40 years, and you just can't sit home and let that knowledge go to waste. You've got to impart some of it to us.
Phil, we have a couple details to attend to.
Thank you, Phil.
I call it in this encore.
Okay, all right. Okay.
We need the motions withdrawn.
So, if, do we operate by Robert's Rule?
You know, what strikes me is we, I don't know how this, so, we approved a plan to some extent, and there's gotta be a way to undo it, but to some extent, Kip's acquired a, so to speak, property interest. And if we're gonna take that away from him...
Oh, Matt, the planning board does not have the authority for the municipality to issue a license.
Okay.
And he never got the license.
No.
They denied it.
The city council needs to issue the license as they do with auto graveyards.
So, all we did was recommend that it be issued?
That's, that's what the planning board would do. And again, this, this whole process for this auto recyclers activity is all new to the staff here at City Hall, being that we only had one that we knew of, who we, we've always considered to be grandfathered. It was, he was in operation and in place well before I even started with the city 15 years ago. So, that was always just an annual renewal. He'd send his paperwork into the state, and now, with this application for a new individual, with the access of the state statute and the review criterion, that's what's brought this whole thing forward. So, in the past, where the code enforcement officer would sign off on the paperwork for the state for his license, now Penny is in a position that, as the code enforcement officer, knowing that he does not meet the review criterion mandated by the state, that it puts Penny in a tough spot, that she really can't issue or to sign his paperwork, knowing that the site does not meet the requirements, the neighborhood for location of wells, and there's the green law stream that runs across the back of the property, there's issues with fencing and screening, the location of the cars from property lines, there's a, if you went through these requirements, you see a whole list of questions.
So, are we okay with... Fencing and screening is another issue for other, there's some other ones in town that needs to be taken care of as well.
There are many, there are many violations in Caribou.
I sent 26 notice of violations out.
It is, it is just, so, we did a public hearing where he could present evidence to establish the different facts that were necessary to gaining the approval and eventually the permit, and we held the hearing. And then, we found those facts, even if we didn't know what we were doing, I guess. We made factual findings about the circumstances of his property and approved it. I don't know that we can...
Right, we approved it, go to the council, and then the council knew better than us or code enforcement knew better than us.
No, it never went.
Then who just...
We did an ordinary plain old site plan approval.
Right, so, we didn't really have to rescind that.
We didn't rubber stamp his business.
Right.
We, but we did that approval in error.
Okay.
Because we didn't have all the facts.
So...
So, just...
By saying, after further information was forthcoming, I move that we undo our... How do you word that? Rescind.
Okay, the motion.
Oh, you have it.
Matt Hunter moved to approve the application for Kip Griffin to become an auto recycler, seconded by Todd Pelletier. Motion carried with all in favor. It's number one under Roman numeral three in the last, in the minutes of May 11. So, did I hear something? Okay, so...
If, if that's the way it's always been done, then probably it's, you know, probably save a lot of time just by keeping with that, you know, that tradition.
Rescinding?
Yeah.
And you know, Matt, it probably has not been done before.
No, this, this is, I think it's probably legal. I think, I think somebody would have to appeal from a decision, wouldn't they?
After, after the meeting, last, the last meeting, of course, Steve and I talked after the meeting. Neither one of us slept the whole night, because the next morning, I, I said, Kip Griffin is gonna be here at 8:00 in the morning, and he's gonna expect that I'm gonna sign that paper. What am I gonna do, Steve? And Steve says, why don't you write to MMA Legal? So, that's what I did. I came in early that morning, I think it was a Friday morning, and I, I sent them off an email, and much to my surprise, they, well, so, he came in, of course, and it was actually maybe 8:11, and I was surprised, actually, that it was that late. And he wanted me to sign his paperwork, and I said, I'm not signing your paperwork. And of course, he was not happy, and I said, I have sought the opinion of MMA Legal about signing this paperwork because I don't feel you've met the requirements, you have not, I have requested information from you that you have not provided to complete your application, number one. Number one, that's number one. And number two, by my reading, it would have to go to the council anyway, and the municipal officers would need to have a hearing and grant a permit. So, he left, he was mad. Caribou isn't business friendly. I should just get a sign that says that, and they could read it as they're screaming at me, because at least three days a week, Denise can attest, she's across the hall. People are mad, people are saying we're not business friendly. Much to my surprise, MMA Legal actually called me back around 10:00 that morning and said that it can be revisited. So, if they, if the planning board feels they've done something, they can revisit it. And if it's rescinding it, I don't know. But he said they can, what you should do is ask them to revisit their decision. If it goes to the council, then you should do what you can not to have it passed there.
Does he have to be here for us to revisit it?
We'll have to rehear it.
Well, no, wait a minute. To, to, for us to pass a motion to nullify our prior approval?
Well, any, any, any action like that would require at least as much notice as was given to have a hearing at which we wrongly approved it.
Well, then, let's put...
I don't know, I think we're getting too far into the weeds.
I think you're taking it just a little bit too far, okay? As a result of that, okay, based on maybe not having all the pertinent information, you made a, you made a, a motion and approved, a motion to send something forward, then it come to, come to the council without any, any further direction here, you can rest assured it wouldn't have passed there, okay?
So, what are you saying?
Because I...
So, are you saying, oh, we need, what we should do is a motion right now? Or do we have to do anything at all?
Well, MMA Legal said to have you revisit it. No.
So, do we just make a motion to...
That, that I don't know, they, but he, they said that I can, they said it would have to go to your, your municipal officers anyway before it could be granted a permit. So, that's what I called him back and said, I am not signing your permit today because I have been told by MMA Legal that it would need to go to the municipal officers.
Right.
So, that's, and then it was over, and I don't think I've heard from him since. Have I, have, have we heard from him? I don't think we've heard from him.
Well, then, I guess maybe the question is, should, should you give him a call and ask him, is he still wanting...
We're playing the ambiguity around this thing.
I mean, because if he, if he's still interested in pursuing this, then we should put it on next month's agenda?
No, not until he comes in.
And, and tell him, and provide him a list of things that he is...
So, for the fifth time, I'm gonna give him a list, highlight it.
We've given him a list already.
I mean, one, one option is to just let it fail at the municipal office, and then we don't get into this weirdness of withdrawing.
Right, yeah.
Okay, well, so, let's just make a motion. I'll make a motion that we revisit the Kip Griffith application after proper, all the information that is required from the code enforcement, from the code enforcement officer is completed, and then we can revisit the whole application.
I don't think we need a motion for it. She said MMA said revisit it, we just did that.
Well, I think we...
Yeah, and I, and I didn't ask for any further clarification because honestly, when he said you would need the permission from the, a permit from the municipal officers, then, then to me, I'm off the hook. Because if it requires a permit from, from the municipal officers, then I don't have to sign that today. And that was all I was looking for, was for me to have something to call him and say, I'm not signing that today, you need a permit from the municipal officers.
We need, we need a path forward.
Well, isn't it just gonna end up on the council's agenda eventually?
If it goes forward.
Well, he needs to come back, you provided him a list, you're saying five times or four times...
Well, no, it's only four, so we're not exaggerating.
Four times of what he needs to provide. And so, the application till then is incomplete.
It is incomplete.
So, and so, what he's, what he needs is to find out how far away the well is. We need to figure out what he's gonna do for screening and what else.
How far he is from the green law brook.
He should actually come in and address this part, the limitations on graveyard, automobile recycling businesses, and junkyards. So, he, he should provide you with a plan that addresses all of these...
I agree.
That shows that he complies.
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's other things too, like, he needs to have a written plan for what he's doing with the hazardous components that he's taking off.
And we see the property, it just doesn't fit for being an auto recycler or, auto recyclers, you know, when you boil it all down, they can do pretty much everything a auto junkyard or auto graveyard can do. So, that's the storage of crashed vehicles and...
And there's a lot of, if, the statute has a lot of, of requirements as far as removing all of the fluids from the vehicles, and he needs to provide a plan of how he's gonna do that. There's a part of me that's just saying, let's just table it until he resurfaces with a more complete application.
And I think a motion to do that would, I guess that's, this is a, one of those untested areas that we've never run into before.
Or move to table it.
Okay, take it easy. I don't think we can move to table something that we've already approved. That's why I think we need to formally withdraw the motions of approval. We need to undo what we did.
By the two tables that made the motion in the second.
Yeah, but Matt's not sure if formally reversing is legal, you know?
I'm not afraid to take a chance. I don't, I think it's iffy, but let's do it, it's 8:00.
Okay, well, the motion.
Don't write that down.
Make the motion.
Is it, I move we, we redo, how do we phrase it?
Withdraw.
Withdraw the approval.
Mr. Second?
I have a tough, I have a tough time with this, because I mean, I think we all voted on this.
Yeah, without full knowledge.
Yeah, but...
I, I just say, what were they? Does, does, does the law enforcement world, are they able to reopen cases when they find new evidence?
Not after they tried them.
No?
No, that's double jeopardy.
But here's the thing, that you approved something that wasn't correct. And further, further investigation found that we didn't follow state statutes in all, in...
Okay, so now...
So, and I know ignorance is no excuse of the law either, but to do things correctly, when you discover something like that, especially in a situation like this, I don't think you're harming anything.
If, if Todd, if Todd is reluctant to, to second the motion to withdraw, then I think we just let it rest, we don't do anything, and the application is incomplete, and if ever he shows up and completes it, then my understanding is it's gotta go to the council for them to deal with, and so, let that be the case.
So, if I may, if a person feels that a code enforcement officer has administratively made a mistake...
made a mistake, or that a planning board has administratively made a mistake, that applicant can then appeal that to the Board of Appeals or the Superior Court.
Well, let him do that.
I'm just throwing that out there so that you realize that there is the potential for, and the, and the Board of Appeals or the Superior Court may have a tendency to just say, okay, take that back to the municipality and have the municipality rehear.
Go through it again.
Your application, and that's where the phrase de novo comes in, that they'll say, go back to the Cariboo, and the planning board should rehear this, nothing to do with the hearing before, but to hold a new hearing on the application. Just saying.
Well, yeah, I'm sure you said we're going to go that far, because...
Was there anything else?
I, I, there's a couple of things I want to bring up.
Make them quick, please.
We have to set a date for the next workshop.
Yeah. We're going two weeks from today? That's what we'll be doing.
It's okay with me.
Six plus fourteen, twenty, that's fine with me.
What day is that?
Twenty. Oh, no, today's the eighth, not the sixth.
Twenty second.
Looks like twenty, twenty second.
Oh. I'm, I'm in Massachusetts.
I won't be available either.
All right. So, put it someplace in July.
Well, we can go to the twenty ninth, instead of the twenty second. I'm available the twenty ninth.
Friday?
No, that's the Thursday, the following Thursday, three weeks from today.
Nope, not available.
Well, you don't all have to be.
Okay, perfect.
As long as you have enough to, you know, have a good discussion. Okay, so Thursday, the twenty ninth?
Yeah.
Okay.
Twenty ninth, five thirty?
Mm-hmm, yep.
Now, at that meeting, we have to be sure and talk, because we failed to do it last time, we, we have to be sure and talk about the zoning issues around where the Hilltop School is currently located. So let's just make sure that gets done. And the other thing is I have a question for whoever's in charge of car lots. Penny?
Yes.
I'm kidding. Across the road from...
Does this need the whole, does this need all us?
I want to raise the issue, because I want to know what's going on. Across the road from the wood stove shop on Route One South, there's six or eight, or ten cars parked in a field, and I'm just wondering what the hell they're doing there. They're not on Gary's lot, they're not on Hilltop's lot, they're just there.
Gary Raymond owns that land, I'm guessing there must be cars...
Okay, if he owns it, that's fine, that's the answer.